Can't get it to work? We're love. Working?
Good evening, it's seven thirty, time to call the regular meeting of the Washington Courthouse City Council to order. We will begin with an invocation by Mr. Johnson and Mr. Blair will lead us in the pledge.
By God. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather here among friends and neighbors. Thank you for the many blessings you have given us and for the many blessings yet to come. As we gather here, Lord, I ask that you give us the wisdom, strength, and courage to best represent the people of this great city. Most importantly, Father, may your will be done.
Amen.
Would you the pledge please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call please.
You have Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Hawke. Hernandez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lynch. Christman.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Hawke and Mr. Lynch.
Head me separate.
I'm sorry, for Mr. Hawke.
I'll second that.
Thank you, roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Lynch.
Second.
Thank you, roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes. Next is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Any questions, comments, changes, mistakes, also moving in.
I'll make a motion to approve the council minutes from six twenty-three, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Thank you, roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes. Moving into the business session, Mr. Denon, any communications?
None.
Thank you. Report of council committees, let's see. Lady on the end, Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee.
The Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee met in the city council chambers of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at five P M. I presided and those in attendance were Mr. Dale Lynch, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Ted Hawke, council member, Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Christman, council chairperson, Mrs. Chelsea Baker, economic development director, Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney, and Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee reviewed progress with industrial development. Number two, the committee noted the status of various development projects within the community and downtown area. The administration advised the committee of upcoming shop hop events and the Art on the Square event that will be held on August twenty-first. Number three, the committee noted recent future B R E meetings held with local companies. The administration advised the committee that discussions were revisited with local businesses regarding workforce issues and finding ways to rebuild the workforce within our community. Number four, the administration advised the committee that multiple projects were progressing. Number five, the committee noted projects and business growth in the downtown area. Number six, the committee noted discussions regarding possible opportunities for investment and expansion of infrastructure for adult and student vocational education programs. Number seven, the committee reviewed progress with commercial development. Number eight, the committee welcomed Mrs. Christie Bowers to the Chamber of Commerce. The administration advised the committee that the Welcome House W C H project would begin soon. Number nine, the committee noted the progression with the painting of the South Main Street mural. Respectfully submitted myself and reporting secretary Kelly Ford.
Any questions, comments?
I'll move that accepted as read.
Second.
Thank you, roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes. Next is report on the Finance and Personnel Meeting. Mr. Johnson had volunteered to read, he's on that committee since Mr. Lynch's absent. You're up.
The Finance and Personnel Committee met in the city council chambers of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at six P M. Mr. Dale Lynch presided and those in attendance were: Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member, myself, council member, Mr. Jim Christman, council chairperson, Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager, Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney. Number one, the committee benefited from a review of the statement of cash for the month ending in May. Number two, the committee benefited from a review of the investments of the city of Washington courthouse. Number three, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council for supplemental appropriation. See attached. Number four, the committee benefited from a review of personnel issues. Number five, the committee benefited from a review regarding human resource services. Number six, the administration reviewed the cost summary for the Central Ohio Healthcare Consortium for twenty twenty-one. Number seven, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council, approving Mr. Keith Eccles for the Board of Building Appeals and the Board of Zoning Appeals. Number eight, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council, approving Mr. Scott Dullmeyer for the Board of Building Appeals and the Board of Zoning Appeals. Number nine, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council, approving Mrs. Nancy Hammond, Vicki Lynch, Mary Polly Dean for the Carnegie Public Library Board. Number ten, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council, approving Mr. Bill Beatty for the Fayette County Fair Housing Board. Respectfully submitted, myself and Mrs. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
Thank you, any questions or comments on this report?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Thank you, roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes. Reports of city officials, Mr. Denon, city manager.
Thank you. First off, I would like to apologize to residents around the wastewater treatment plant. We have an unintended consequence of our improvement project there in that we at the moment are incredibly noisy. It's incredibly irritating and I'm very sorry for any inconvenience that has caused to residents in that area. Ron and myself, we've contacted the engineer, we've talked with contractor, and we are working to get rid of the noise as quickly as we can. That was a consequence that was not foreseen and we will try to address that issue as soon as we can and we realize that that needs to occur in the relatively near future because that really, it's irritating. Fayette County Fair, thank the fair board members and people that make the Fayette County Fair possible. Note the strength of four H in our community and thank the numerous citizens that have given of themselves to impart their skills and knowledge to young people in our community via four H. Fire in the Sky Boots, would like to thank all the folks that make that possible, they did a wonderful job this year. Again, remind citizens about the new water sewer bill format. We still occasionally get a call about this. They glance at the bill and the letter form and their reading discount has disconnect. Okay, so you get this nice new letter form bill, relax a little bit and just look at it. It's discount and not disconnect. Paid by draft, that simply means that you set it up for some sort of automatic payment and that's why if you look at the bill, it has the amount that you paid by draft and your balance is zero. Remember that payment methods haven't changed. You can still pay that bill in the way that you prefer. It's just the format of the bill has changed. Those postcards were getting lost in the mail, they're getting stuck in magazines. As increasingly mail got sorted in Columbus, they jammed up the mail sorting machines in Columbus, which means that they would get then shipped back down here and they'd have to physically sort them out. The letter is just a more reliable way to get you the bill, but how you pay hasn't changed at all. However you prefer to pay that is up to you and that's all still there. The Shelter House by the Splash Pen, would really like to note the work of Shannon Sword down there. He's done an exceptionally wonderful job. Shannon works for the service department and we're incredibly pleased with him and proud of him. Wastewater, John Leatherwood down there, new employee, doing a wonderful job and we're incredibly proud and pleased with him. I would like to thank the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department for their recent work with the marshals, that is much appreciated. And would like to wish that everybody enjoyed the fair and they stay safe. That concludes the report.
Thank you, anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Denon?
Got a little bit of a cold, so if I drop off after here.
John Leatherwood, is he the younger guy, tall, brown hair?
Younger, not particularly tall, but not short either, average height, bearded?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think I know him, he's a very good guy.
Yes.
The Director of Finance, I don't think is here, is he?
Tom will be here with you next meeting.
Mr. City Attorney and Mr. Pitstick.
I would just have one item to bring to everyone's attention, arrest. As far as the criminal cases in town is up considerably. We've had an increase with crime as well as traffic. So the highway patrol is back in business. They took a few months off because of the COVID, but we're seeing a tremendous increase in traffic stops as well as criminal activity within the city of Washington courthouse itself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk's report. Madam Clerk, that's you.
This was writing it down, sorry about that.
I thought I mean it right. We're not going to need to talk over it anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before council is a request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new C-two liquor permit from Ohio C V S Stores L L C, doing business as C V S Pharmacy, three four oh eight, located at seventeen ninety-five Columbus Avenue, Washington courthouse, Ohio. The request was reviewed by the Chief of Police with no objections. Does council have any objections to this request?
I do, Madam Clerk, I would go. I think we have enough liquor opportunities in this town, I'm not in favor of another one.
C-two is not beer, is it? It's just mixed drinks, is that what it is or?
I believe it's a carryout.
Carryout drink, yeah, but it's more of a, yeah, it's not beer. C-two is not beer.
I think, yeah, it's like carryout beverages.
I think.
I got you, okay.
Mr. Pitstick, all we're discussing here is if it's carryout, is if we wanted a local hearing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Because these people have been investigated, sorted by our police department, liquor department in Columbus, so all we have the option of is asking for a local hearing. That's all this is. So it's rather limited what we can ask for anyway.
So in other words, it's allowing the citizens to command the council and talk about the permit, is that what?
Well, we'll let our department come down and have a local hearing, I guess, but maybe we'll have.
They can have a local hearing, but again, they have a magistrate or arbitrator come down and he or she would have a small hearing to allow individuals to come in and express their opinion. However, it's only regarding certain aspects regarding zoning, perhaps, how close they are to churches, schools, things like that. That's primarily it that we can object to.
Because there's a certain number of licenses available for our county, correct?
That's correct.
So it doesn't, we don't have the right to say yes or no to a license, it's more about zoning or if there's an issue with a person.
Practical purposes relating to the store itself.
You have the ability to put it on the floor as a thing of vote on.
Okay, I'd like to do that then, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do you hear second on it?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Voting to put it on the floor.
They are, yes.
Wait, there was a motion to second to put it on the floor, I do believe that the vote now is whether to.
Have a hearing.
Have the hearing.
Okay, that's.
Well, we asked for it, but I don't think it's guaranteed, is it?
Well, they don't want a hearing.
They will have it here if we vote to it.
Right, but again, it's very limited to what you can do.
Okay, so we're voting whether you're asking for a hearing or not.
Right.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Hernandez.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Christman.
No. Well, that ends the clerk's report. Local residents and taxpayers, does she still want it all?
No, I think she's okay.
Yeah, yeah. Put Joe, help her out with that.
Moving into legislation previously introduced. Item A is ordinance number eight dash twenty twenty-one, second reading.
I'll move that we put ordinance eight, twenty twenty-one on second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Ordinance number eight dash two thousand and twenty-one, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to a code of ordinances of the city of Washington courthouse, Fayette County, Ohio.
Thank you. New legislation in writing, ordinance number nine, two thousand twenty-one, first reading.
I'll make a motion to put ordinance number nine, twenty twenty-one, first reading.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Ordinance number nine dash two thousand and twenty-one, amending ordinance number fifteen dash two thousand and twenty by providing supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Washington courthouse, Fayette County, Ohio during fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Item B, resolution number R twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-two dash two thousand and twenty-one, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager's reappointment of Keith Eccles to the Board of Building Appeals for the city of Washington courthouse for the term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Next is item C, resolution number R twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, first reading.
I'll move that we put resolution R twenty-three, twenty twenty-one on first reading.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-three dash two thousand and twenty-one, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager's appointment of Scott Dullmeyer to the Board of Building Appeals for the city of Washington courthouse for the term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Item D, resolution number R twenty-four, twenty twenty-one, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R twenty-four, twenty twenty-one on first reading.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-one, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the city of Washington courthouse, reappointment of Mr. Bill Beatty to the Fayette County Planning Commission for the term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Item E, resolution number R twenty-five, twenty twenty-one, first reading.
I'll move we put resolution R twenty-five, twenty twenty-one on first reading.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-five dash two thousand and twenty-one, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the city of Washington courthouse, reappointment of Mrs. Nancy Hammond to the Carnegie Public Library Board of Trustees with the term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. Item F, resolution number R twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, first reading.
I'll move we put resolution R twenty-six, twenty twenty-one on first reading.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion on this one? Roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-six dash two thousand and twenty-one, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the city of Washington courthouse, reappointment of Mrs. Vicki Lynch to the Carnegie Public Library Board of Trustees with the term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Item G, resolution number R twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one on first reading.
I'll second that.
Thank you, any discussion? Roll call please.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-seven dash two thousand and twenty-one, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the city of Washington courthouse, reappointment of Mrs. Polly Dean to the Carnegie Public Library Board of Trustees with the term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. Well, around the table, Mr. Blair, Ms. Lance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, since Mr. Lynch is not here for a quotation, I'd like to take his place. Hopefully he will approve this. The quote I have is, "We recognize the value of our voices only when we are silenced." And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Well, I want to wish everybody a good time at the fair that's coming up here, I think next week. But there's another concern I probably should have brought up at the other committee meeting. I'd like to see, after what happened in New Holland, there in the house, the Miller's house, which is very unfortunate for those folks. I wonder if our city could have our fire department maybe go around every once in a while, a couple of hours a week, and maybe go from house to house, street to street, maybe just walk up around people's houses and kind of check with their meter, make sure there's no gas leaks or anything sometime before the winter. I just, if there's some way we could work out that. Not to tie them up for any long period of time, maybe an hour, a couple of hours a week, just take a section of town and maybe just kind of walk around and check around in the neighborhood and make sure there's no leaks going on. I don't know, I know they do that already if they get a call, but just something along those lines, just for some kind of safety and security of the neighborhoods, maybe start in certain neighborhoods first and just kind of walk around the perimeter of the house. I think it would read if there's any smell of gas or anything, you could probably read coming from the house. You don't have to go into the house unless the residents request it. But something maybe we can have a further conversation about at a later date. So I'd like to see what the fire chief has to say about it and then see if we could logistically work something out like that sometime before the winter months where people start firing up their furnaces. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it's interesting you mention that because a new gas company just did that about a month ago.
But I didn't, they didn't come down my street, I didn't notice.
Well, they went around the lines and the mirrors.
Did they?
Maybe their house or anything.
Well, good, very good.
And also, the one at New Holland blew up some propane, which is heavy as an air.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Hangs under the house.
Yeah, that natural gas is more likely to go up through the flue.
Yeah. A little bit of difference there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, oh, you're busy studying, go ahead.
You're busy studying.
I would like to thank everyone who helped out with fireworks this year, I thought it was a very good show. I do like fireworks, I would say, my only criticism. About every year, I hear about one British song or so by the Beatles usually or Paul McCartney come across and it's just, I don't know, I, it's ironic, I don't hate it, but you know. I don't know, on the Fourth of July seems ironic. Anyway, so besides that, besides the fireworks being great and a great show, you know, I liked Mr. Blair's comment, you know, we don't understand the value of our voices only when we are silenced. I think that's a good quote. Speaking on that, I know Ted isn't here and Ted usually is the one who makes the motion whenever the liquor permits are here. So I'm glad Mr. Schultz seconded your motion because I would do that with Ted because we can only get to a discussion technically after a motion, a second, so I think that's very good. We haven't had one in a while, which is why I wanted to bring it up. You know, my thoughts in general on alcohol. You know, I'm okay with more in the city. I understand that some people have a problem with it, but I view that as a, as an individual thing, not necessarily a government thing, or the government needs to step in and parent everyone. So that's my view on it, that's my view with a lot of things, a lot of other drugs besides alcohol. You know, I would say really the only drug that I believe should be illegal are the sorts of drugs such as heroin where after the very first dose, someone's free choice is taken away. I don't think that's necessarily the case with the first sip of alcohol. I don't think that's the case with even the first smoke of marijuana. You know, so those are my thoughts, those are my feelings in general on it. But the only time that the government should, in my opinion, take away someone's choice on the ability to consume a drug is whenever that drug is so powerful that it takes away a person's choice on whether or not to consume it on the very first time. So anyway, those are my thoughts, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate again the fireworks, it was so awesome to be able to be with family and have cookouts and celebrate a holiday and then beautiful fireworks at the end, so. And I know that's a lot of work and costs a lot of money, so I greatly appreciate it. And I encourage people next year, if you didn't contribute to that, to do that. I always contribute, I figure I'd be paying to go to Kings Island or I'd be paying to go here or there, so why not give a little money toward our local resources? Second thing is, I just want to thank the police, the sheriff, and all those who were involved. I was very happy to see all those faces publicized. They're not doing, they're not doing what they should do and I like it when we rectify that. So very proud of our group when we did that the other day. That's it.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank the fire department and I'm sure that the street department, the service department has a little bit to do with it, of course, law enforcement with traffic and what have you. And they do a good job. I also would like to thank the local officers who helped the task force and I did see John Long on the news. Did you see him on there? He was up behind Vernon, but Vernon was out front and that's okay. But glad to see a local boy down there, I think when he followed Witherspoon, because he was down there for what, three years? Looked like we had the bulk of them here though, just what we need. And I don't disagree with, that's what Mr. Johnson said, the problem with anything like that, when you try to take stuff away from people, the people that don't need it are the ones going to have it. I mean, prohibition didn't work a hundred years ago. You take guns away, the crooks are still going to have guns.
Yep.
Take drugs away, the drug dealers are still going to be selling it, so it's a habit. Take drugs away, the drug dealers are still going to be selling it, so it's a habit.